Tonight is February 11th. It's about 5 past 6. This is a meeting of the Browderboro Planning Commission, and I am calling it to order. Our first order of business is to approve our minutes from our last meeting, which was, it seems like it was a year ago, in a way it was, but for December 10th, 2012.
Wow.
Any additions, subtractions? When you were still thinking of what Christmas presents to buy.
Yeah, really. I guess, really, we haven't had a meeting since then, huh? We've been to hearings, but no meeting, huh?
Yeah, we were supposed to, a couple of weeks ago.
January got canceled because of ICE.
Yeah. Getting icy out there now.
Move to adjourn? So someone's got to move the...
I think that we approved the minutes of December 10th, 2012.
Okay.
I'll second you.
Okay. Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
I didn't give us very much time to respond.
Sorry. No, jump in, jump in, I just...
I'm only reading, not glancing up and down, because I thought they were done, so I'm reading back.
Oh, that's all right. You're ensuring that we keep a good record. Okay. So, let's have a vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes 4-0. Let's see. Announcements. I'm going to defer talking about the town plan until past our public comment, even though no one's here, just in case they walk in. Does anybody have any announcements apart from the town plan they'd like to share? Do you guys have anything?
Yeah. The V-Trans has announced that they're going to hold what they call a 502 meeting for the Putney Road Upgrade Project, which is otherwise referred to as STP 2023, parentheses, and the plans are available for review in the town offices, both on the second floor and at the Town Clerk's office. Meeting is scheduled for March 7th at 6:30 PM.
March 7th?
Yep. This is the public input phase, which is prior to engineering final design and right-of-way purchases for the road project. The road project status is still unclear. It's not...
No.
It doesn't. It's still not on the existing list of projects to be taken up within 10 years.
And there's also a giant picture of it in the hallway here on the second floor that depicts what it will look like, which is, is it four new rotaries or three new rotaries along Putney Road?
Is that four roundabouts?
Four roundabouts.
Four roundabouts.
Is this meeting here?
What's that?
Is that meeting here?
Yes.
So a roundabout is not a rotary?
No.
No.
Interesting. Uninformed Director of the Planning Commission, soldiers on.
I would have looked at it, Saint.
Wow. Jeez. Well, anyhow.
But we just go around in circles.
I got plenty of notice in the paper and stuff, so people...
There's been a hearing notice published by V-Trans last Tuesday, I believe.
But an article, I mean, I know a lot of people don't read those public notices, so is the planning office planning to put anything in?
It's a V-Trans project, so we're not really authorized. You know, it's one of those things where if V-Trans wants to publicize it, they're going to have to publicize it.
Would it be in our interest to ask them to do that? Can we do that?
I'm sure they're obligated to do it.
They're obligated to do, yeah.
Have more than just that little, those public notices, those, I mean, an article would be good, because a lot of people have a lot of input on this, I think. I think, I mean, there was lots of input all along in that whole process.
That's what I hear.
Anyways.
Anyhow.
Yeah.
Any other announcements? There was that email that went around, Cultural Inventory or something like that.
Oh. There was a workshop last Saturday that was canceled due to the weather, and has been rescheduled for this coming Saturday, so that would be Saturday, the 16th of February, and it's at, from noon to 1:30, in the meeting room in the library on the second floor, and it's a cultural mapping exercise associated with the Core Arts Project, which is the NEA-funded cultural mapping project.
Brad, is that, can people drop in at any time, or do you go from noon to 1:30?
I think people can drop in and out, yeah.
What time is it going to start?
From noon to 1:30.
Oh, okay. And where again? I'm sorry.
The Brooks Memorial Library.
Oh, the library, thank you.
Meeting room, second floor.
And these are the people from the Conway School of Landscape Architecture.
Oh. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
And was this in conjunction with, there's some woman from Somerset or Westminster or something that is a fellow or something, that the town has somehow, she's got some kind of scholarship, and she's there this year, and she's doing projects, one of her projects is here in the town.
She's a student. She's one of the consultants on this team, Kim Smith.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, I just read something in the paper, and it wasn't, a while ago, and it just wasn't clear to me what it was, exactly.
Right.
So that's what this is.
Yep.
Okay. We're all set on announcements?
Yep.
There is no public here, and so there will be no public comment. And now I will update you on the adoption of the town plan, which was a longer process than we intended, or than we expected, I should say. We didn't really have control over the length. I know that you both were here, you both came to some of the meetings. We couldn't get the whole Planning Commission there for every meeting, unfortunately, so in case they watch it, or for the benefit of the public, I'm just going to give a complete sort of playback plan. I think, when did we send the plan to the Select Board? December 10th?
October, we sent it to them.
October?
Yes.
Oh my God.
They had to have it 30 days before they had their first hearing, so the first hearing was in November.
Right.
Wow.
They may have gotten it at the end of September.
I didn't even realize how long it had been.
Long enough for people to forget.
Long, yeah, indeed, long enough for me to forget. So, there were some major disagreements between the Select Board and our recommendations. I think the biggest issue was a general one, which is whether a town plan should say, "We are going to do X with our land use planning," or "We are going to consider X." And it was the judgment of the Select Board that in the majority of the cases, the language should be changed to, "We are going to consider X." The exception to that would be the fluvial erosion hazard language we had in our plan, which was, it stayed the way, it stayed the way that the draft had it, which was prescriptive, and it's probably a pretty good idea, a pretty good symbol of where the Select Board stands on that issue. And that's something, of course, we'll be getting into this year. The reason that the plan took so long, I think, to go through the Select Board process was because, like our board, they have not done a town plan, and it was kind of a new experience for everybody. It was challenging sometimes to figure out the logistics of just how to deal with each chapter and each idea the Select Board had for the chapters. And I suspect if we could all get together and do another town plan, we would do it in a different way, and we could do it a lot more efficiently. But, you know, that's the thing with doing something every five years. It's hard with volunteer boards, and the Select Board is paid, I guess, but, you know, come on. It's hard for...
They get paid?
They are paid.
They get a stipend.
A stipend.
I mean, to live on what they're paid, they would have to dig a hole down by the Connecticut River and put tarp over it or something.
It's just $2,000, I think.
Yeah. They are vastly underpaid for the work they do, and I would consider them, in a way, giving more than we do. But, so anyway, so with the turnover that's endemic to all public boards, it was just kind of hard for us to do the first time, and it took a long time, and we worked through it, and unfortunately, we may have different boards in five years down the road and do the same thing again, but I suspect someone will be sticking around somehow and hopefully apply our lessons to the future, because the distance from our last town plan to this one was what?
A long time.
12 years?
Yes.
So that was a 12-year gap, and this time, God willing, we'll have a five-year gap pursuant to the statute, which...
Well, hopefully, the next time, we've done a pretty thorough job on this one, I think, very thorough and very conclusive, and hopefully it won't be, take as many years as this one did. Hopefully, this has helped us, I think, a lot, and just to, you know, look at where we are then, and then how to just, in a way, just really update it, put in new goals and new action steps, and, yeah.
Does Ramonta allow for a simple kind of review and reauthorization of a plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So the big change to consider from recommend is not going to change significantly what we do on our board. We're still going to try to consider many of the issues we discussed in the town plan, from the fluvial erosion hazard and various flood mitigation techniques, to rezoning, to redoing subdivisions.
So will we still be considering our recommendations?
We'll be considering, and we'll try to come out with drafts, and nothing will become a law until what we draft goes before the Select Board and they ratify that. So in terms of the mechanics of our board, it hasn't changed much. I think it's significant, it was significant to me that the board endorsed the fluvial erosion hazard protections and the other flood mitigation techniques that we're thinking about, because as I think you guys know, that stuff was rejected by the Select Board three years ago, and I wasn't sure where they stood. Of course, we're going to have a new Select Board by the time we come up with our next proposals, so, you know, who knows what's going to happen, but we'll keep on trying to write some laws here, and...
It's like playing poker, you know, because you have five cards, but three of them are gone, and you get new ones.
Do you play a lot of poker?
I do.
Oh, you play five-card stud. I see.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay. That makes more sense now. So, anyway, to the Planning Commission members who did come and show their support, we appreciated that a lot, wish we could have had more, but it meant a lot to have you guys there when you could come. And of course, we thank the Select Board for being very complimentary to us for our work and approving, for the most part, I think, a draft that was consistent with our goals. And I've been looking forward to writing some laws here, and hopefully we can do that now.
Oh, zoning.
Yeah, zoning.
I think, I just want to say, I think the Select Board did a great job. They had a numerous nights with a lot of public input, some of it that, to me, got a little off-topic, but, you know, it was, they really allowed everybody to vet their, you know, their opinions and whatnot, and I think they did a great job, and they came up with, you know, what do I want to say? They went through it, and they, you know, they did their job, and I appreciate it.
They earned their stipend.
Yeah, I mean, and they had to schedule many extra meetings themselves, because they didn't always do it on Select Board meeting nights, so it was extra work for everybody, and I just want to say thank you to them, and that I appreciate it, and I, you know, I know they're an outgoing board, for the most part, but I appreciate their due diligence to the whole process.
Anything to add to my summary?
No, I just, I think James and Liz did a great job representing the Planning Commission, so they deserve it.
I understand.
Okay. That's right. The staff, if we didn't have the staff, we would have had a, we would have had a very hard time, because they help us...
We'd have an empty binder.
Well, it would have been easier in the listening.
No, and to you guys also for taking all their feedback and summarizing it and putting it together, the way you did for us when we had our public meetings, and there was lots of feedback, and the way you put that together, I think, was great, and I think it probably helped the Select Board a lot, too. So, thank you for your work on that.
And it was really great, because you both responded to things that were unexpected and time-sensitive, and Liz and I, especially me, I hate to lump you in with me, but, you know, I wouldn't have known what to do with all the pragmatic issues that were wholly unrelated to planning, but just how to actually deal with every issue and every chapter and, you know, help them digest it. That was very helpful, and it worked, and if it hadn't worked, if someone hadn't come up with something, I don't know, we might not have a town plan until March, I think, or April. Well, we're probably not going to have one until March.
Well, we still need to get through it next Tuesday.
Yeah, we do.
That's true. Okay. So, enough about that. Can we go to the 2013 work plan?
Sure.
Well, I think the important part that you missed, though, talking about the town plan, is that the Select Board is going to hold their final hearing next Tuesday, the 19th, 6:15, here, as part of their regular agenda, and it's their intent to take a vote on it, so, and they may not be adopted.
Yeah, copies of the final draft have been made available. One was filed with the Town Clerk's Office, as per the statute, and it's been there since...
A week, at least, over a week.
And the copies are circulating with the Select Board as well. So, the current version for distribution reflects the list of changes approved and accepted at the last meeting.
Last meeting.
Thank you.
The document, we didn't make you all copies, because it's a big document, so if you want it beforehand, it is available on the town website, or we could put it on a flash drive for you and get it to you, or if you want, you can wait till after it's approved.
I've read it enough.
Yeah. We'll get it when it's in its final, final printing form, right?
An up or down vote on Tuesday?
Yeah, I expect, I mean, it's hard to say. The Chair or the Select Board will open the matter, then, you know, actually close the hearing, and then look to somebody to move a motion, and then, I don't expect them to go back into the text and suggest any changes. If it were to be like that, it would be some differences between what they wanted and what we provided, in terms of the intent of how to actually, you know, wordsmith the changes that were accepted. We're hopeful that it'll just be a quick process.
It's going to be an up vote.
Yes, we're holding that.
I think positive.
Yep.
2013 work plan.
Okay. So you have before you what is actually really a draft, and what I've tried to do here, working with Sue, is to think of the different types of work that we need to undertake to finish the work on the town plan, and you'll see that the discussion of the town plan tonight, that's P for plan, we don't expect it to come up again, hopefully it won't.
Didn't want TP?
No. And so, the other items, what I tried to do was to think about each area of interest, or at the very least, sort of, zoning district that we'd have to consider to review the zoning district in a meaningful way. Some issues are more complicated and more technical than others and require more input. What I've tried to do here is sort of block out some time between now and December, and I'm looking for feedback from the group here as much as possible. So if you can read this properly, it's a bit weird, because it's black and white, but it really exists as a color document.
What does this LU stand for?
Land Use, just land, yep. So let me explain the key, I guess, down the far left-hand side. So T Plan, Town Plan is P, Organization is O, Land Use Regulations, Work Meaning is M, Land Use Regulations, Training is T, Land Use Draft Hearing is an H, and Land Use Public Workshop is a W. So the first thing I should draw your attention to is that we're in the closing stages of providing you with proposed subdivision language, and we would hope that we could schedule a public hearing for the subdivision regulations by the end of March.
Oh.
So...
Can I, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Go on.
We've been considering merging districts and eliminating extraneous districts, and it may be that that's represented on here, but I think we should hit that before we start dealing with rural residential or any specific district, you know what I mean?
The only districts that are likely to disappear or merge are...
The Putney Road.
Putney Road ones, and then I think...
Some...
On Canal.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, there's the Commercial Office and...
All those little ones that we...
All the little ones, yeah.
Yep.
Which I think, in our thinking, they would get talked about when whatever was going to, it was going to get merged with.
Right.
Why aren't we going to do something with the industrial area down on the river, too? Or am I misremembering that?
No.
Okay.
Not at this point. And so, so the idea here is to sort of break out the workload into components. You'll see, starting in April, the building blocks activities starts up for us. That's primarily a training exercise, and it will stretch across April and May.
It's also listed in February, too, is that right? I see it there, on February 25th.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, if you got a chance to read through the packets, you may have...
Questions for next time.
See that, and we'll talk about that next on the agenda, what exactly that is.
Yep. So, the idea there is to actually undertake the work, there'll be a workshop probably scheduled in the end of April, that will be undertaken by the building blocks consultants. Sue's going to discuss that in more length in the next item on the agenda, but that's an example here of trying to incorporate either the services of a consultant, an outside consultant like that, or for us to also conduct workshops. If you turn over the page, you'll see that in September, there's a fluvial erosion workshop as well, and the idea there would be, hopefully, to have professional services undertake that. It'd be an outdoor event, most likely, or at least partially outdoors. And the purpose there is to conduct a meeting that's primarily focused on the needs of the planning commissioners and the Select Board members, eventually, as well as key decision-makers, but also have it open to the public.
What do you see?
Urban center.
Oh, okay.
And the only other thing that sort of stand out here is an item in the July 8th meeting for Commissioner Training, we expect there'll be new commissioners, and we've probably been a little light on our Commissioner Training while we've been doing the town plan, but I think it's time to devote some more energy to Commissioner Training. And then you'll see here, the only other thing that begins up in December, I'm sorry, November and December, is the Discussion of Review Criteria. That's the general standards and specific requirements, part of the zoning ordinance, where it's fairly technical and fine, and fine-grained, but there's an important discussion to have in there. That would be useful to wrap together with a discussion of both LID, Low-Impact Development Standards, and the possibility of design guidelines for commercial purposes.
So, first, we're going to do subdivision.
Yes.
Before April.
Yes.
Then zoning.
Yes.
In all its various parts.
Yes.
But then it seems, if design and review criteria are part of zoning...
Yes.
We're taking a break to do fluvial erosion?
Fluvial erosion is part of the zoning ordinance.
It is part of the zoning.
Yep. The way it's structured is that there's the Special Flood Hazard Area section of the zoning ordinance.
Ah.
I think section 3200. And that would be, the proposal, it would be to draft new language for that section of the ordinance.
So we're going to get subdivision out of the way before April, and then the rest of the year is going to be zoning.
You got it.
Great.
And August, of course, is subject to...
Life.
Change.
Yeah.
We kind of are first step at it.
At the end of June, kind of, look at it and re-up, you know, re-up, you know, re-look at the second part of the year, that would be great.
One of the little ideas here is to actually review how we're doing with the work plan at the beginning of each quarter, so, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Yep.
That is a good idea.
I think it's a good idea to do the flood in September, because that's hurricane season.
Because that's what?
Hurricane season.
Yeah, yeah, we thought about that a lot.
Yeah.
Seasonal.
Well, we felt if there are potentially new members in July, it was good to wait and have everybody on the, starting on the same page, and then it was like, well, you could start in August, but people are wet.
Right. September was both as late and as early as we thought it was practical to do. We should probably get raindrops of people.
And we're going to pull in people from the state like we used before?
We're considering the best approach at this point.
Right.
Yep.
We talked about, Brad and I also talked about, you know, there's a couple of workshops in here, but, you know, as we go on there, maybe needs for more workshops, so having that as one of our meetings, or, you know, I think that that's an area where we need to think about, and as we get closer to different topics, maybe we'll have ideas on what kind of public outreach we need.
Which may result, I guess what we're trying to say here is that may result in some rescheduling, so for instance, if it makes more sense to do a workshop on a Saturday or something, then we'd do that in lieu of the, one of the meetings, one of the two meetings that we've got scheduled for the month, or if we're going to do a workshop on a normally scheduled evening, it might start earlier or whatever, or be on a different day, if it's something to do with finding people from other parts of town, you know, out of town or something to participate. So we just want to be flexible to some extent about the schedule there, and not, and if we're on the side of being flexible rather than adding in extra meetings. We felt that in past times, when we've intensified the frequency of the meetings, we haven't necessarily gained from that.
Check.
Well, I'm pretty excited about this stuff.
You sounded...
Yeah.
No, I really am, I really am. I've been chomping at the bit...
Been waiting for a long time to decide.
I've been chomping at the bit to get doing, to get into stuff apart from the town plan like this.
Yes. It'll be nice to get into the, work that...
The town plan is very important to a point, but these laws are going to affect people for a long time, and if we do a good job, you know, it's really meaningful to the town, so...
It'll be a lot to consider.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and we'll probably have some people, some criticism of us that we didn't feel the plan, but that's life.
Right.
Anything else with the work plan to discuss? Okay, how about the building blocks?
So if you had a chance to read through the materials, I included a copy of the letter of interest that we submitted back in October to, there were a couple of programs going around offering technical assistance, and we had applied both to the EPA Sustainable Communities Program and to Smart Growth America, and we found out that we were awarded the technical... technical assistance through the EPA, so we're pretty excited about it. They have, they have a bunch of tools, and we had selected to apply to the Sustainable Strategies for Small Cities and Rural Areas, knowing that we wanted to undertake zoning rewrite, and so we have had an initial conference call to understand how it works, but there's a more targeted one coming up to kind of talk about how it will work for Brattleboro, what are our issues, what kind of assistance are we looking for. This is, they're not going to come in and rewrite our zoning ordinance, they're not going to give us language for the zoning ordinance, but what they will do is help do community education and kind of go through the process, you know, hold the workshops to identify the issues and provide examples of how we can handle it and to give us an implementation, kind of, tools to implement. We had identified, and this kind of dovetails nicely with the planning commission, is how to do smart growth in a rural area. So, you know, we had talked about upzoning, the minimum lot size, changing the minimum lot size in the rural and the rural residential, because we didn't really feel like the minimum lot sizes that we had were promoting the type of development that we wanted. And so, that's one of the issues that we can kind of work through with this technical assistance. So, it'll come with, there's an EPA staff person who will be involved, she's out of Region 1 in Boston, and then they also have a contractor working with them, and he is out of Virginia, and so, pretty excited about it. The technical, the workshop will be held either the end of April, beginning of May, and then we'll receive a memo, a couple-page memo with implementation steps within six weeks following that, even closer.
Are we, are we held to that end of April, beginning of May?
We are.
Yep.
It could be, probably, it probably could be a little bit sooner. The dates, I think, that they had suggested were something the week of April 15th, maybe, and then maybe the first week in May. So, that's kind of the first question is to kind of understand what, what the planning commission's availability is.
I'll be away from April 24th to May 11th.
I hope summer's good.
Yep.
I never really know, but I don't have anything planned.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I have a week-long trial, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, that's all right. How about you, Mark? Planning anything exciting?
I don't have anything planned until August.
Very good.
I essentially can't plan anything until it's warm.
No, I think you're kind of done with the planning thing for a while.
How about you, Carolina?
There's a couple Saturdays in May that don't work, but otherwise, I'm fine.
I think it's likely going to be during the week, because I think that that'll work better, and it might be kind of an evening presentation, a lot like the Danburden workshop. So, an evening presentation, getting the right stakeholders involved, kind of a day-long workshop with a site visit or something like that. We don't, we have our first call February, next week, so we're not really there on the details, but they did kind of want to nail down a date.
This would be really great to get those, those people who are really, let's talk about educating the community, so that the people who I heard a lot of pushback on, on those hearings with the select board on the lot sizes, both in industrial and in the rural residential or whatever it was, the proposed things that we made, and I think if this, if this is going to handle some of that, that would be great, because that's...
Yeah, I think, I think some of the issues that I'm thinking about, we probably need to refine a little bit, is they can help with the planned unit development, that could be really useful, because that's a hot topic in the plan, protecting our natural resources, which goes along with what we're trying to accomplish with the plan, and how do we encourage the kind of development that doesn't, isn't sprawling in the rural areas? So, how do we keep the working landscape working, so...
Have you guys worked with the EPA in this capacity before?
I have not.
No?
No.
I would like to commend the staff, because they've always getting these great grants. There's this one, and the AARP, and the Core Arts, and they're really a nice thing to do for the town, and it shows that they really did a good job.
Thank you.
So, when you look at our work plan, we kind of take up the rural and the rural residential first, because that'll follow on from this, this work?
And then, you know, and I feel, while the issue of increasing the minimum parcel size was well discussed in the land use chapter of the town plan, I think it's an important step to take regardless of that, to allay people's fears and just sort of do the basic math explanations very clearly, so that people are aware that it doesn't restrict, if you like, access to those kinds of neighborhoods or that kind of landscape, and just addresses what the, what we've understood from the broader community, which is a real desire to protect and enhance the rural working landscape of Brattleboro, and so, I think this will be a useful series of discussions, and the workshop will focus people's attention on that in a positive way, and hopefully inform the decision-making bodies.
So, the EPA has sent us a pretty detailed manual of kind of what are our roles and responsibilities, and how they found it to be effective in the past, and they suggest that there is kind of a steering committee that can help identify the key goals and desired outcomes, identify key stakeholders, select the sites that we might want to visit, and kind of guide the facilitation team, which is, will be the consultant hired by EPA and the EPA staff person, Rosemary. So, I think that that's a really good role for the planning commission, and that's why it is again on the agenda in February, that, you know, we work through some of the issues together after we've had the initial phone call, and are able to maybe narrow things down, and then we can, can bring it back to you and refine it.
Great.
So, that'll be at the next meeting. What's, what's natural resources impact with a little star there?
It's just sort of a...
Or whatever that means.
There's two items that come up for subdivision as part of the subdivision review.
Oh, that, and then roads in excess?
Yeah, and so, these are more specific areas of the subdivision regulations that we feel like we have to have a work meeting on. The natural resources impact goes to the question of steep slopes, erosion control for construction and, and operation, and other aspects of subdivisions in rural lands that are vulnerable to impact. And then the roads and access question is somewhat similar. The, the current road standards that the town uses are dated with, you know, when compared to with the state's current requirements, and we feel it important to try and get constructive input from the public works department to discuss, you know, that aspect of the subdivision regulations, what constitutes a sort of appropriate scale roads for new subdivisions. If you look at our current regulations, the requirement is for fairly large roads that are constructed in a pretty traditional way. It might not be compatible with the goals and expectations of something like a conservation subdivision or clustered housing, but we do have important challenges with maintaining minimum standards of safety and particularly emergency vehicle access.
Yeah.
So, we just wanted to draw those, attention to those two aspects of the design sta, the subdivision standards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And we don't have dates or place yet.
For the workshop?
Do we?
No, we don't. It looks like, maybe we'll try to go, aim for the April.
If those are announced, where would the viewers at home find that?
Uh...
Where will they have it?
It'll, it'll get out.
Yeah, we'll publicize it once we've said it, but I think...
Do, do you have any suggestions? I mean, because the first is kind of pick the dates and then call around and see what I can get, so in the past, we've used my graduate school.
I like that.
It's got a good setup for presentations.
Did you like that? The Graduate Center at Marlborough?
Oh, yeah, yeah, people know that one, that's a good place.
But are there any other suggestions?
It's a retreat, which is...
Does SIT have anything? I'm just thinking, they're out in a rural area.
They do. They have the International Center. This is probably not a bad time of year. During the summer, that's pretty busy, that's pretty heavily programmed, but we could do that. We could also maybe think about Bonnyvale Environmental Education Center.
Oh, yeah.
Or Marlborough College, Marlborough.
No, it's for Brattleboro.
A lot of stuff happens there, and people are used to that.
Right.
The Graduate Center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the minimum in Marlborough? 10 acres?
No.
No.
Really?
I actually did this for the town plan, I think that their minimum parcel size is, they have resource lands, and they have conservation lands, and then they have rural, and their minimum parcel size in rural is pretty small.
Really?
Three, I think.
Interesting. Okay, can we move on to subdivision regs?
Sure.
So, these regulations are not any different than you saw in December?
So, it's the same handout, basically?
It is, yeah, but I...
But here it is.
Pretty easily, I'm trying to get the, the town plan done, so it's not changed, but it was kind of another bite of the apple, so we could have the world's shortest meeting, I suppose.
I had a short meeting.
Yeah, it looks just as good as the last time.
Well, I mean, we didn't, we haven't talked about it since December.
December 7th, yeah.
Is any, December 10th, I think.
10th, yeah.
Does anybody have things they want to talk about, or do you want to educate us a little on what you're trying to do here? I mean, I don't know about you, but I don't remember the December 10th meeting at all.
You didn't read the minutes? We just did the minutes, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't read the minutes, I trust our faithful staff to record us well, but, I mean, like, when we went into the town plan, you did a very good job directing us to the big deal changes with the PUD, say.
Yep.
And if there are major things that we're doing here, maybe we could talk about why, right now, in general terms. I don't think we're ready to go over language unless you guys disagree, but that might be helpful.
So, I think one of the major changes compared to, comparing to what we have existing would be this, on page 10, is section 3.3, is identifying the environmental resource area protection. So, we had originally started talking about conservation subdivisions as one way to do a subdivision, and we kind of felt like still a good way to develop, but there are some challenges with that. You need some way to permanently protect the land or have a homeowners association, and right now, the levels of development that we're having are pretty low, and that's really not the main type of subdivision that we're experiencing, that would be creating that. But we thought that the basic concepts of the conservation subdivision are a good idea, which is identifying the natural resources first and kind of setting that aside. So, what, we're trying to require that when you're doing a subdivision, so identify those features, and then identify the building sites, and then delineate the lot lines. So, that's what we're trying to do here. I think it appears in this a little bit different than maybe the way some other communities in Vermont do it, but I wouldn't say it's, it is being done where, where they're asking people to identify the sites, so probably need to spend a little bit more time on that, and that will be for the next meeting.
Anything, just, just without wanting to labor the point too much, where somebody's proposing a very small subdivision or a subdivision that's already in a developed neighborhood, the natural resource inventory type approach could be regarded as not applicable, all right? So, what we're really trying to do here is require any kind of a subdivision for any zoning district. So, this could be, this could be a subdivision proposed in an industrial district, and it'd still be required to address these issues if it was a greenfield site where we're expecting substantial conversion, say, from wooded hillsides to, you know, to large warehouse space or something similar.
Great, so this will be for all subdivisions?
Yes, basically, yes. There'll be...
When we were going over the other, we thought, gee, why don't we do this for all of them?
Yeah.
That's a good way to incorporate.
Right.
Any other big things, maybe big things we're taking out?
Big things that we're taking out.
That somehow simplified the process, I'd say, because we basically introduced those standards for, as sort of the default, we didn't have, the document becomes somewhat simpler because there's not a section devoted to conservation subdivision per se, and then language where that would explain where that was going to be applied or not. So, there is some streamlining, if you like.
One thing that I, I wonder, we didn't think about this with the work schedule, but what we wanted to do was move towards bonding.
Yes.
Or some sort of performance guarantee, so this is where the developer puts the money upfront, a certain percentage of the money upfront, to cover costs if they don't make it or don't build it as it's supposed to be. That is a change for Brattleboro as far as...
Yes.
I'm concerned, we've kind of...
Do we have that in rural commercial?
Members of the board were quite concerned about that, so that's good.
Yes.
Do we have that in rural commercial right now?
No.
No.
We talked about it, but didn't do it?
Yeah.
Would only apply to subdivisions, really, when a developer's building new roads or bringing in infrastructure.
Right.
I don't think we talked about it.
I just remember talking about this at some point.
Oh, we talked about it for landscaping.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we were trying to implement a, a bond or a surety to ensure that the landscaping took root and survived at least 18 months or some, some period of time, so that if it failed, there was some recourse. The tool that we've seen used, which is less costly than, than funds and escrow or something, is a surety bond. Basically, it's an insurance policy that the developer would take out that says something like, you promise, you know, they promised to complete it, and if there's a failure on the developer's part, if they go out of business or somehow can't complete the project, then they are required to claim against the surety bond, and then that, it's that money that would cover the completion or provide the infrastructure and landscaping and so forth that needs to be done to complete the, the project.
Subject to zoning officer review?
Yeah.
Is this what...
What, the, the amount of the surety or...
Guarantee that it, work's been done.
I think it depends on what it is. If it's, if it's road construction, it would probably be public works or utilities.
I think, I think it's fair to say, yeah, it is subject, I mean, we need to avoid the possibility that we say it's not done, and they say it is done, so, but it may be different people saying, making that kind of statement about different aspects of the project.
Is this under section 2.8 performance guarantee? Is that where that would?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we didn't have that before.
There's nothing there right now.
No. No.
There's an unfortunate history in town of...
Yeah.
Not completion, so that's good.
Well, I mean, take a look, it's different because it's a building contractor, but...
Yes, but they, by example, is a pretty...
Yeah, really.
Yep.
Yes. Getting back to the environmental resource area.
Yep.
Is there added flexibility to design outside of a resource area?
Not as it's written right now. Are you thinking...
Well, the purpose of the conservation easement would be to design outside of the resource areas and give more flexibility. So, this has the design part, but I don't know that it has needed flexibility.
Oh, I see. Right.
I think I thought about that back in December when I was writing it and was thinking, how could we word something that could allow you to vary from the minimum lot size to make sure you stay it out or...
Not just be wait.
Yeah. So, I'll have to...
So, you're saying that if a developer proceeds with the conservation easement, they should be, they should benefit from more flexibility with the part of the parcel or the land that's not affected by the conservation easement? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think that if a developer has a property and they identify the resources, there might be a conflict between avoiding the resources and needing some of the setback requirements or something like that.
Right. Oh, I see.
Building envelopes is another thing that is not well-used right now. I think that it might be in the subdivision regulations. I can't recall off the top of my head, but don't think it's generally something that's being shown on the subdivision plans. And especially with doing, with identifying the natural resources, you really need to identify the building areas because then that kind of shows the limited...
Limited disturbance?
Yes.
Yeah. And we talked about that, it may have been in December because there was concern that they could identify one area, but an individual might want to come in and build their house and locate it in a different area. So, that's an area we need to go back and take a look at. Brad had talked about concentric circles and anywhere in that area.
Right.
Eventually.
And then it's peripheral to that issue, but it goes back to unfortunately town plan discussions. So, there's a bit of a fixed issue going on with guaranteeing solar access, for want of a better term, for not planning adequately for, you know, questions of solar, you know, the possibility for solar shading. So, in some jurisdictions, property owners who have been impacted by developments that shade their parcels and therefore reduce or limit their ability to make electricity from the sun have successfully taken action against the butter that shades because of all, because they can actually now demonstrate the loss of income. That's on one side of the coin. On the other side of the coin is the property rights that attach to people being able to build in a legal way, you know, meeting the setback requirements and not having to take into consideration the shading, the potential for shading of a neighbor. If we're to do the natural resource function here thoroughly, we should probably think about whether we address solar access or something like that as part of the building envelope procedure.
There was some rewritten language about that for the town plan, wasn't there?
Yep.
That's a tough one.
Yeah.
Well, I think you can make, I think you can make both cases fairly competently now.
Yeah, that's why it's, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
I almost wonder if we should leave it out, let the court deal with it.
Well, you're probably more comfortable with the way they do things than I am, but okay.
No, I just mean it's ideologically tough.
Yeah, it is ideologically. I mean, it goes, yeah, I mean, it's, well, I think it's a challenge for, I think the only jurisdiction that I'm aware of where airspace is really regarded as a private property right and is, can be traded is New York City. And so, generally in the United States, you know, the air immediately above your property is, you know, it's, it's a little fuzzy as to who it belongs to at some point.
Yeah. The analog I thought of though was water. I mean, generally if there's a naturally occurring stream flowing onto your property and your jerk neighbor dams it up, I think you generally have a cause of action.
You should.
Me remembering stuff from that barb.
Jerk neighbor. Yes, yes.
I think jerk neighbor is a universal term, actually.
I think it refers to everybody that lives next door.
We'll all remember not to live downstream from you.
But, you know, that's kind of the other side of the coin is sun like water if you're using it the way a farmer used to use water.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that planning is supposed to protect everyone from is making sure they have light air and open space, so...
Right. And it just has added, you know, added import when you can now demonstrate the loss of income. Because, you know, you can, you can take the rate at which the utility company is going to pay for your power and say, okay, so if your building lasts 50 years, you've just impacted my income in this much over a 50-year period. The settlements that I've seen in other jurisdictions, admittedly outside the United States, the developers pay cash upfront in return for the impact that they've caused, so...
Yeah, but I would prefer that instead of being impacted and paid for it, they not be allowed...
To do it in the first place. Right.
But might that not be contrar instrumental of infill?
I think when we're talking about subdivisions, like, in the context of subdivisions and particularly greenfield subdivisions, it's an argument for clustered housing. It's an argument for thinking about how you're going to arrange the street network and the development so that you make the most of solar gain and that you ensure that, you know, one property is not shadowing or shading another. So, that's just sort of another design element I think that needs to be taken into account. I think in, you know, existing fairly tight neighborhoods, you got a lot of rooftop to play with and that's not so bad. And so, the negative impact on infill, I don't think is that significant. I mean, I would, I would describe most of, you know, the traditional neighborhoods of Brattleboro as pretty tightly built, actually, with its, with all sorts of other constraints as a consequence. And then it's just, so it's rooftop.
Any other big issues we should talk about?
I think we mentioned the road standards one before. We've had some informal discussions with public works. I think that's an area where we really need to ship it off and meet with them, give them some time to think about it. Yeah.
This is making a lot of noise, so I can't...
Are you also freezing?
I'm fine. Oh, it's your wife.
I was gonna say, we need to send it off to public works and have a meeting with them once they've had a chance to review it.
Thank you.
I'm curious what... I think it gives clearer direction to the development review board. I'm not sure it's necessarily simpler. So, I'm curious from that perspective, when you look at this, I know, James, you've talked about rewriting it, so...
Well, not rewriting it.
Not rewriting it, but re...
Softening the language so it's a little less technical.
Yes.
Even if it says the same thing.
To consider instead of recommend?
No, no, not that issue again.
If you like, is the other one.
Once we get a firm redraft, are we gonna show this to DRB at all?
Yeah.
And we could have their input.
Well, I mean, I know that Tim is interested in seeing it. It's, anybody can see it, but...
I mean, I am on the DRB, but I've done very few subdivisions. If you guys are wondering why I'm saying that, I don't really feel like I have a handle personally on the problems with the subdivision regs as they stand.
I mean, ultimately, they're, the planning commission writes the regulations, so...
Oh, yeah.
I'm just, I'm interested in you as planning commissioner, what, you know, does it make sense to you? Do you, do you understand where we're going with it and the kind of the design guidance that we're trying to give with it? I know some of it is technical. It refers to the state road standards and to...
That's what this chart is from.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I'm certainly not suggesting that they have say in what we do, but they have the experience of things that go clunk when you try to apply them that I'd like to hear.
So, we have two more meetings to discuss it and then a hearing.
Right. Actually...
At least.
At least. I mean, I think, I should keep on reiterating that this work plan is pretty draft. This doesn't show, for instance, a lot of time for obtaining DRB feedback in a formal way. I think that the idea would be here to circulate it to them mid, the middle of March and, you know, receive their comments in a formal way. I think it's important that we separate the purely procedural questions that the DRB would have in terms of how you'd actually work with the subdivision regulations from the more ideological ones that they may have about the level at which things are set or, you know, the sort of design expectations that we might be laying down. I think those are properly the policy consideration of, of the commission.
Weren't they doing a little research of their own a while ago into subdivision? If I remember correctly, they were gonna, I don't know if that got bookmarked or relayed because of a heavy schedule, but I remember hearing them talking about it at one point, that they were gonna research other towns.
I don't know if they ever went about doing that.
I don't think they did in the...
I don't think so. I think that Tim may have done some...
Right.
Some work, but, and more, more so that when they had a conversation with us, they knew.
Wouldn't.
Not, not doing research to necessarily turn it over.
Well, they brought up their issues when they were here.
We had a joint meeting.
Yeah, they did.
Well, I think we're done unless you guys have anything else to add. I had one wholly unrelated question that I thought I could ask and I should ask in the meeting in case anyone else was interested, but I noticed that Hinsdale has a really great map on their town website, their tax map. You can layer different stuff and do all sorts of things like that. And I know this is a completely random question, but is that something we have any control of?
Do you know maps online?
Yeah, do you have maps online?
I don't know.
Okay. We can send you, is it, we, we use a proprietary web-based GIS system called Maps Online.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know Maps Online.
The town subscribes. And so, much of the information that I'm assuming, I have not seen in sales, now you may be curious, but...
Well, check it out. I just thought I'd bring that up here rather than personally, in case anyone else was interested. After that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn if you'll make it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye, four, nothing. Meeting adjourned, 7:10.
Wow.